Okay, Mayor Aggits, we're live when you're ready.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome this evening to our Perth East Council meeting on this Tuesday, June the first. If everyone could please bow their head, we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you. A motion to confirm the agenda. Is there anything that anyone wishes to add to the agenda? See, nothing. Okay, a motion who would like to move by Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Harry. Okay, if you have a preliminary interest, you can disclose it now or as the meeting goes along. We have thirteen items under our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to have called? Andrew?
Five point one point four, please.
Okay. You? And one? Okay, all right. So we have twelve items in to receive for information. And I have a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Hugh. Second by Andrew. Consent agenda items be received and the minutes be adopted. All in favor? Harry. Okay, Andrew, would you like to speak to five point one point four?
Yeah, I remember we had John Nader a while back at the beginning of the term talking in this kind of a briefing, and he mentioned some of the pending firearm legislation, including the OICs and other items like that. I'd like to support it, recommend the council, we support this just due to our demographic in this area and how this items like this will affect them. And possibly get an update from MP Nader on the status of, you know, how is it in his opinion, this will affect our rural municipalities, including ours? And the government's response to the petitions, I don't have them in front of me, but there is two large petitions. So I guess my motion would be to support this and contact MP Nader's office for an update, including status of the petitions.
Okay, do you want to move that?
Yep.
Okay, so moved by Andrew. Do we have a seconder? Harry? Okay, so we have a motion that the council, the township of Perth East, receive the correspondence from the town of Kingsville regarding B C C twenty-one, an act to amend certain acts and to make certain consequential amendments firearms for information and that and that our council of Perth East gives support and we contact and update from John Nader's for a status. Is that correct, Andrew? Okay, all in favor? Harry. My apologies, but my phone's ringing in the background and it's gonna have to ring. Anyway, we're going to move now to delegations. We have two items. We have two drains tonight, and so we welcome Bill Dietrich. He is with us tonight to give us an update on the drain. So the first drain we're going to talk about is the Miles Schaefer municipal drain. So Bill, the floor is yours.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. As you know, when we consider these reports, the purpose of this meeting is to review the scope of work that's being proposed here. So I'll take a few minutes, Mayor Aggits, members of council to review our drainage report on the Miles Schaefer municipal drain 2021. The, I see, we have a copy of the of the plan up on the screen there now, and this report has been circulated to all the affected landowners. We've received no correspondence or phone calls from any property owners since these drainage reports have been have been delivered. So I'll just go through quickly just a bit of background information. First of all, the history on this this drainage system. The original drain was constructed back in nineteen forty-nine. Our SW Archbold was the engineer. Under that report, there was a little over twenty-three hundred feet of six to ten inch tile was installed. And that's the main drain, which is the orange line on the drawing. And also, there was three thousand five hundred seventy-three feet of open ditch constructed for an outlet for this drainage area. A branch drain was constructed for eight hundred seventy-one feet on the on the Steinacker farm, which outletted into the upper end of the of the open ditch. Our appointments for this project were under section seventy-eight and section four by Bill and Harold Steinacker, the Greg, Stephen, and Wayne Steiner, and also Bill and Harold Steinacker signed the petition as well. So they signed the section seventy-eight and the section four for improvements to the drain and also to replace and extend which the purple line that's on the drawing, which is north, we've referred to as Branch A. So our proposal under this report then includes some work on the on the open portion, which is the green line on the drawing. The drainage area there is approximately two hundred thirty-one acres of land that drains into the upper end of this open ditch. There's one hundred seventy-seven meters of open ditch will be cleaned out, and we're going to be replacing and installing a new culvert at station one seventy-seven on lot thirty-six of concession eight. The new pipe will be twelve meters in length, and it's a twelve-hundred-millimeter diameter culvert. The total estimated cost for the work that's being planned here on on the open portion is seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. On the main drain closed, which is the orange line, orange line, we're planning on replacing and destroying and installing a new tile drain to replace the old six and ten inch tile. The that drain there drains approximately forty-five hectares of land or one hundred and ten acres. There will be five hundred and thirty meters of pipe installed, and this includes three hundred fifty-millimeter diameter tile at the upper end and four hundred and fifty-millimeter at the outlet. It also includes a new road crossing under road one-ten, but catch faces on both sides of the road. We've estimated the cost. This includes the construction costs, administration, and allowances for the the construction of the main drain closed at seventy-nine thousand dollars. The branch drain, which is the purple line, it, the watershed for it, there's there's three different properties that drain into it. There's approximately ninety-two acres of land being assessed. A three hundred fifty-millimeter tile will be installed at the upper end and four hundred four hundred millimeter tile where it outlets into the upper end of the open ditch. And the estimated cost for the Branch A is one hundred seven thousand five hundred dollars. So that's very briefly, an outline of what what's being planned here. So if there's any questions, I'll, I'd be pleased to answer them concerning the the work that's being planned here.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Is there any questions for Bill on this drain? See, questions, we do have a resolution that the council of the township of Perth East receive the presentation from Bill Dietrich Drainage Engineer, Dietrich Engineering Limited, Miles Schaefer Municipal Drain 2021, parts of lot thirty-five to thirty-seven, concession seven, and parts of lot thirty-six to thirty-nine concession eight, Southeast Hope Ward, Township of Perth East County of Perth for information, and that the quarter revision for the Miles Schaefer Municipal Drain 2021 be held on July sixth, twenty twenty-one at six-thirty P M. We have a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Hugh. Second by Amanda. All in favor? Harry. Okay, and the second drain that we have is a stock municipal drain, and Bill, where's yours again?
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. The plan's up there already. So again, similar to the last project, this drain was initiated under section seventy, or we had a request from the municipality, I should say, had a request to make some changes to the upper portion of the drain, which is the open ditch on the end and not in property. Then the last report that was actually prepared on this train was was done by our firm, and under that report, the whole drain from top to bottom was reconstructed and cleaned out. And there was various culverts installed in the stock drain under that report. That was done back in twenty fourteen, approximately seven years ago. The you'll see at the on the upper end of the of the this open ditch, there's an existing municipal tile drain that outlets into it. It's a twenty-one inch diameter tile. And that was installed, I believe, back in nineteen eighty-one under a report that was prepared by K. Smart Associates. And that that tile drain extends from the upper end of the open ditch right over to the west side of Perth Road one thirty-five. The the drain does cross under one thirty-five, and the upper end of the drain on the east side of the of the road was installed back in the in the nineteen sixties. So getting back to the original request, then Casey Van Nynaten had petitioned or requested improvements. The he's asked for the the open portion being closed on on his property, which is in the north part of lot twenty-one. So this proposal here, then, we've had a couple of meetings out on the site, and we sent out preliminary information to the landowners prior to this final report being prepared. And what our plans are here is to fill in three hundred twenty-six meters of the open ditch by means of a six hundred-millimeter diameter tile drainage system. The tile drain was designed at a three thirty-eight-millimeter or an inch and a half drainage coefficient, and it drains approximately one hundred forty-seven acres of land. The the landowner where the ditch is being filled in has has will be providing the necessary imported fill required to to fill the ditch. The contract requires the contractor to fill the ditch and install the new new drainage system and connect up the existing tile drains into that into this new system. The estimated cost for this project is sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars. We just received, we we sent in an application to the Conservation Authority, the Upper Thames, and also to the Fisheries and Oceans to get permits for for this ditch enclosure. And today, we received a letter from from DFO saying that an authorization will not be required and to fill in the ditch. They have no concerns, and we're still waiting for a permit from the Upper Thames. So at this stage, that's basically, and I've had no no correspondence at our office here since the reports have been filed. So any questions regarding this work, I'll try to answer those.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Is there any questions for Bill on this drain? Hugh?
Bill, you talked about the environmentals. Is that only because you're closing the ditch in?
That's that's absolutely correct, yeah. Under whenever there's any changes to a water course, if you're going to enclose a ditch or say relocate it or 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 deepen it or widen it, you need a permit from the Conservation Authority. And all ditch enclosures in Ontario, we have to apply, the municipality does, and we've done it on their behalf, to get a permit from DFO as well to enclose the ditch. So that's because of the ditch enclosure here. Typically, on most of these drains, if you're putting in a tile system, this would not be required.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Bill.
Okay, if anyone else with any questions? So we have a motion that the council, the township of Perth East, receive the presentation from Bill Dietrich Drainage Engineer, Dietrich Engineering Limited, Stock Municipal Drain 2021, parts of lot twenty to twenty-two concession seven, parts of lot twenty and twenty-one concession eight, Ellis Ward, Township of Perth East, County Perth for information, and that the quarter revision for the stock municipal drain 2021 be held on July sixth, twenty twenty-one at six-thirty P M. Need a motion? Moved by Andrew. Second by Jerry. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Thanks, Bill. It's great seeing you again, and hopefully the next time we can see you in person, but I think that's
Hopefully, we're getting closer to that.
Yep.
Okay, all the best, guys.
Okay, thanks. Now, okay, now we'll move on to public meetings, and we have two public meetings and one public hearing. So the first one is, I declare this virtual public meeting to be open. This virtual public meeting is being held to consider a proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Emmanuel Abner, Vernon, and Marie Wagler, South Part of Lot Eighteen, Concession Eleven, Morningside Ward, thirty-nine fifty-six, Line eighty, Listowel, Perth East. This virtual meeting is an opportunity for the township to advise the public of the purpose and intent of the amendment and to receive their input prior to considering adoption of implementing bylaw. If a bylaw is adopted to implement the zoning amendment, a notice of passing will be forwarded by prepaid first-class mail to various agencies of interest and others who have requested notice. An appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal objecting to the adoption of the bylaw may be filed with the clerk not later than the date stated on the notice. Any person attending this meeting who wishes to receive written notice of a bylaw passed to implement the amendment is asked to give their name and mailing address to the clerk following this meeting. No written notice, except as previously noted, will be given unless requested by the email following the meeting. Due to COVID nineteen, the public meeting procedures have been adjusted to adhere to the provincial guidelines for holding electronic meetings. Any person who wished to be heard regarding this matter was asked to register prior to this meeting by the deadline of Monday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one at twelve noon with the municipal clerk. I will now call on Perth County Planner Susanna Reed to present the planning report and recommendations. Susanna, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Aggits. As the mayor has reviewed, this is a zoning bylaw amendment. The property is designated agricultural in the County of Perth official plan and zoned agricultural in the Perth East zoning bylaw. The applicants, the owners of the property, have submitted an amendment to the township to request the consideration of a converted dwelling. That's one house with three dwelling units. The Perth East zoning bylaw converted dwelling provisions allows the the construction of two dwelling units in converted dwelling. And the owners of this property have requested that the special zone for their farm be allowed to commit three residential units. The intention of the three households is to provide, the intention of all three houses is to make a living off of the farm where they're living. And the provincial policy statement allows for agricultural uses to include accommodation for full-time labor where the size and nature of the operation requires additional employment. The County of Perth official plan includes a policy that permits additional residential units in the converted dwellings within agricultural zones subject to the implementing zoning bylaw. And in this case, the applicants have requested three residential units. So in the planning department's opinion, the zoning bylaw is consistent with the direction offered by the twenty twenty provincial policy statement, and it conforms with the County of Perth official plan. The recommendation to council is that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment. Those are my comments, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. No one registered to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? No one registered to make a presentation to speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? The applicant or the applicant's agent did not register to speak in respect to this application? Are there any questions from members of council? I have one just for clarification. So are they renovating the existing house and adding on to it, or are they separate residences that are going to be placed on the property?
What they're proposing is to expand the existing building. So the critical thing from a planning perspective is that there not be additional permanent residences on the farm. The concern there is the the perception that the farm could be subdivided in the future in order to separate the farm residences. So as all three units are proposed for residential uses accessory to the farm, and they're proposed to be in one building, the planning department is satisfied that it meets the intention of the official plan.
Okay, thank you. So council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting. Bylaw number two oh four dash twenty twenty-one to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting. So our second public meeting is a zoning bylaw amendment by Avon D. Farms and Poultry. So I'm not going to go through all the preamble. I'll just state that it's from D. Farms Poultry Limited, care Doug and Denise Shear, reference plan forty-four R forty-four oh thirty-one concession to Northeast Hope Ward, Township of Perth East, forty-one fifty-eight, Road one oh nine. And then we're going to skip right down to the planner, and we have Adam with us tonight, and he's going to give the report. So Adam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Good evening. I'm going to share a screen and walk council through this rezoning application. And I trust everybody can see the image on screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Just by way of context, this was a surplus farm dwelling severance application that was originally endorsed by Perth East Council on March sixteenth. And this application was to sever a surplus farm dwelling at the north end of the property, shown in yellow. And the retained farm lot would be the large parcel in red, which has a dwelling and the existing poultry operation. One of the standard conditions of consent that are imposed on these types of applications is that the surplus farm lot be rezoned, as well as the retained farm lot. And these conditions are straight out of the provincial policy statement and the Perth County official plan as a requirement for for a severance. So what the application in front of council will do tonight is rezone the surplus farm dwelling lot to the A-one zone to recognize the existing dwelling and then allow for a home occupation accessory structures and so on on the property. And basically recognize it as a non-farm residential lot. The retained farmland will be rezoned to the A-five special two zone, and that will basically recognize the existing farm operation with a dwelling, and it will establish the minimum lot area for the retained farm lot as forty hectares, as per the zoning bylaw. The application was circulated to landowners within four hundred feet of the property. We did not receive any comments in favor of or against. The Conservation Authority had no objection to the application, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Adam. No one registered to make a presentation or speak in position of the application? No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Applicant Denise Shear has registered to answer questions with regard to this application. Are there any questions from members of council? See, no questions. Okay, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting.
Sorry, Mayor Aggits, Denise is on the line. I'm not sure if she has anything to say or not, though, but she did register.
Okay, sorry, Denise, did you have anything you wish to say?
No, thank you. I think everything has been addressed, and I'm just waiting to hear your response.
Okay, thank you. Bylaw number two oh five twenty twenty-one to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting. This virtual public meeting is not concluded and will continue with the regular meeting of council. So we do have two motions. We'll go back to the first zoning bylaw that the council, the township of Perth East, receive the report dated June one, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the planner entitled zoning bylaw amendment number Z oh four dash twenty twenty-one P E submitted by Emmanuel Abner and Vernon Wagler affecting lands particularly described as lot eighteen concession eleven Listowel, thirty-nine fifty-six, Line eighty, Listowel, Perth East for information, and that council approved zoning bylaw amendment number Z oh four twenty twenty-one P E. We have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Amanda. Second by Jerry. Is there any more comments or questions? All in favor? Harry. And the second one, that the council, the township of Perth East, receive a report dated June one, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the planner entitled zoning bylaw amendment number Z oh five twenty twenty-one P E submitted by Doug and Denise Shear for Avon D. Farms Poultry Limited affecting lands particularly described at lot thirty-one concession to Northeast Hope Ward, forty-one fifty-eight, Road one oh nine, Northeast Hope Ward, Perth East for information, and that council approved the zoning bylaw amendment number Z oh five twenty twenty-one P E. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Andrew. Second by Hugh. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Harry. Thanks, Adam. Good to see you again.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, and have a good evening.
You too. Okay, now we'll move to public hearings. We do have one public hearing. Council now temporarily adjourned to sit as committee of adjustment pursuant to section forty-five of the Planning Act. I now I now declare this virtual public hearing open. This virtual public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Jason and Allison Horst and described as part of lot forty-five concession three, forty-three thirty-five Perth Road one nineteen, Northeast Hope Ward, Township of Perth East. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are asked to withhold comments on this application until all present have been given an opportunity to be heard. Due to COVID nineteen, public hearing procedures have been adjusted to adhere to provincial guidelines for holding electronic meetings. Any person who wished to be heard regarding this matter was asked to register prior to this meeting by the deadline of Monday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one at twelve noon with the municipal clerk. Any person who wished to receive written notice of the decision made by the committee of adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary Treasurer following this hearing. An appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal objecting to the decision made at this hearing may be filed with the Secretary Treasurer not later than June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. No written notice, except as previously noted, will be given unless requested at this time. I now will call on Perth County Planner Susanna to make the presentation, the planning report, and recommendations. And Susanna, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So this property is north of Stratford on Perth Road one nineteen. It's an existing property that has a residence on it, designated agricultural in the official plan and zoned agricultural in the Perth East zoning bylaw. I just will share my screen, and so I think there's a drawing here that really explains the application well. So this is a minor variance application, and this shows the footprint of the existing residence on the property. Now, it has a twelve-foot-six-inch setback, and the this area here is the proposed addition to the property, which includes a second story. So there is going to be an increased encroachment into the side yard, which is shown here. This is two-point-one-two meters, and in metric, this is three-point-eight-six meters. So a minor variance is required in order to commit this reduced side yard setback. As the property is zoned agricultural, the side yard setback requirement is seven-point-five meters in an agricultural zone. So the four tests of the of minor variance is outlined in the planning act that committee will be familiar with. Does it conform with the official plan? Does it conform with the zoning bylaw? Is it considered minor, and is it considered appropriate planning for this subject property? These tests are reviewed in the planning report that is in your council package. And the planning department has reviewed these requirements and come to the conclusion that it satisfies the four tests of the minor variance. The recommendation is that the application be approved with one condition that the addition be built within eighteen months of approval. With one condition that the addition be built within eighteen months of approval. And I'm available to answer any questions of the committee's request.
Okay, thanks, Susanna. No one registered to make a presentation or speak in opposition. Tom Diamond is in support of the application. He is a neighbor, so he's in support of other than the applicant or the applicant's agent. The applicant or the applicant's agent is going to speak in respect to this application. Are there any questions from the committee members? Andrew?
Just a minor question in the recommendation of the eighteen month window for construction. I know we've seen. A year before. Planning department comes up with the number. Just for consistency, so I can understand it.
Yeah, thanks very much for that question. I was wondering if anybody would notice that. Yes. Yeah, upon reflection, it seems that I was noticing in other municipalities, they were adding a condition of construction within eighteen months. And it seemed that eighteen months perhaps might be more realistic, given the, you know, the constraints for construction and building materials at this time. So that that is what generated that and going forward, the intention is to have a standard eighteen month condition.
Thank you.
Hey, any more questions? Questions, we're going to back up a bit. My apologies, Tom. I did not realize you were on the line. So do you have any comments that you wish to make?
No, as a neighbor, I think it is practical to go ahead with it. And very much speak in favor of doing so. I I thank your. Your ability to include me and. Yeah, I don't see any any concerns other than. It was used as a residence, but as a farm, it really isn't. Any lot size for a farm, so it should be literally rezoned as residential in time coming forth.
Okay, thanks, Tom. So going back to committee members now after we've heard Tom's comments, is there any more questions? Nope. Okay, so committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. So the Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received a report dated June one twenty twenty one. Prepared by the planner entitled minor variance application. Number A oh seven twenty twenty one PE requested by Jason Horst affecting lands described as part of. Lot forty five concession three Northeast Hope Township of Perth East forty three thirty five Perth Road one nineteen for information. And that council approved minor variance application number A oh seven twenty twenty one PE. Requested by Jason Horst affecting lands described as part of lot forty five concession. Three Northeast Hope Ward Township of Perth East forty three thirty five Perth Road one nineteen with a condition that the addition be built within eighteen months of approval. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. I declare this virtual public hearing closed. Okay, now we're going to move on to planning. And we have a part lot control application by Kathy and Darren Brewer and Susanna, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So this property is in Shakespeare. The street address is three nine nine five eight and three nine nine five B Regent Street. And I'll just share the screen to show you the. Photo in the in the planning report. So this is an existing semi detached dwelling. So the entire property includes both of these some semi detached units. And the property owners have submitted an application to exempt the property from part lot control. Which means that reference plan can be submitted at the registry office. Effectively creating a new lot line through the dividing wall between the two dwellings. So a reference plan is also in your in the council package. So this shows the two parts of the semi detached dwelling. So through part lot control exemption, they the applicant's consultant will register this plan. At the registry office, which will have the effect of creating a lot line here through the center of the two units. The planning report reviews the application with regards to the requirements in the zoning by law. The property is zoned R two residential medium density. And the both lots conform with the lot area in front of its requirements. And side yard setback requirements in the R two zone provisions. The official plan provides direction with regards to servicing. So the lot has two municipal sewage connections. And one well, so the well is private and. The municipality doesn't have any jurisdiction with regards to the private well. What the suggestion is, is that prior to subdividing the lots that the. Applicant or the owner of the property create a rate of water sharing agreement. Outlying outlining requirements for maintenance of the well and any conflict that might arise. So the process where a part lot control by law is that council considered the by law in your package tonight. And provided that you are supportive, that you approve the by law and forward it to. Adopt the by line and forward it to the county of Perth for approval. And that is in fact the recommendation that council approved adopt the by law sorry. To exempt lot one fifty two plan three thirty four from part of the control for the purposes of subdividing the lot.
Okay, thanks, Susanna. Is there any questions on this report? No, okay, so council, the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner entitled part lot control application. Number PLC dot one dash one dash twenty twenty one dash PE. By Kathy Brewer dated June first twenty twenty one affecting lands described. As lot one fifty two registered plan three three four Southeast Hope Ward Township of Perth East. Thirty nine ninety five A and thirty nine ninety five B Regent Street Shakespeare for information. And that council adopt by law twenty nine dash twenty twenty one and forward to the county of Perth for approval. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh. Is there any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Anything else, Susanna?
That's all for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
We're going to move on. We have nothing from the C A O. Nothing from the clerk, nothing from finance. Public Works, we have the lining line thirty three paving transportation operations. So Wes, the floor is yours.
Good evening. This traffic study is basically for information for council. Our biggest concern was to see whether it warranted traffic signals or. Turning circles or things like that. And so we had this study done. There's some recommendations. That I think we should pass it on to the county because the both intersections are controlled by the county. Road one oh seven and also the Oxford Perth boundary as well, so. I really have nothing more to add to that. Of course, with COVID, there was some guesswork done as well as far as as numbers. Once the roads paved, then for sure that will be included in our next traffic study. When we when we do that with the the new term of council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Wes. Is there any questions for Wes on this report? No, okay, council, the township of Perth East received a report entitled line thirty three paving transportation operations assessment. Dated June one twenty twenty one, prepared by the manager of public works and parks for information. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Andrew. Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, anything else, Wes?
Well, thank you.
No, okay, we have nothing from building. Then we'll move to recreation and community services. Becky, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As council is aware, we had applied for Infrastructure Canada grant back in two thousand nineteen. Finally, the process has been completed and we're allowed to announce that. We did receive funding for the Park Pavilion. With the funding, the township, the municipality was responsible for twenty six point six seven percent of that. And we are pleased to announce that we received that funding from William G's Construction. And so the project will not require any additional funding from the municipality. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thanks, Becky. Any questions for Becky on this? No, I just we will send Mr. Gee's a thank you. Is that correct? Or has that already been done? Okay.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, perfect, thanks. Okay, and thank you to Wes too. He was one of the ones who helped get us this from Mr. Gee, so very much appreciated. So we have council, the township of Perth East received the Infrastructure Canada ICIP grant perk. Park Pavilion and Trail Report prepared by the Recreation and Community Services Manager dated June one twenty twenty one for information. Moved by Jerry. Second by Amanda. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Thanks again, Becky, for all you've done to get this. It's great. Okay, now we're going to move on to fire and we have the open air fire by law. So Bill, the floor is yours.
Great, thanks very much, Mayor and Council. The report before you tonight deals with our open air fire by law. It's received one minor amendment back in two thousand thirteen. However, it's basically the same by law that was enacted some fifteen years ago. Staff has been accumulating issues over the past few years. And we hope that our proposed changes will address our concerns. Our organization has changed, our processes have changed, the wants of our residents have changed. So we've modernized the process and updated several definitions to more accurately. Represent how we process burn permits. We've addressed the enforcement of unauthorized burns. So the violators can be fined and our costs recouped. Building demolitions and large rural burns have been addressed as well. Also, the use of barbecues on balconies of multifamily dwellings. Has been addressed in this in this by law. The by law has been reviewed by our staff, township staff and the township solicitor. I did attach a table of proposed changes to the report and I gladly try and answer any questions of council.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Are there any questions for Bill? No questions, okay. Council, the township of Perth East received a report entitled open air fire by law dated June one twenty twenty one. Prepared by the fire chief for information and at council repel by law oh eight two thousand and six as amended by by law. Fifty four two thousand and thirteen and give three readings to by law thirty. Twenty twenty one being a by law to regulate conditions under which fires may be set. In the open air or in contained sites and precautions to be observed by persons setting fires. We have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Andrew. Second by. Hugh. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, we have no correspondence, so then we're going to move on to council and committee reports. We do have the my mayor's log where I was for the month of May and the events I attended. Is there any questions on any of those items? No, okay, does any one have any committee reports they would like to give? No committee reports, okay. I do have a couple of things. In our land division, this past Monday, we had the application that we had in Millbank. That those two lots by Robina and Meg Delina Kipper and that application was approved by council. The. Ones that we've had previous, we have the one that's just outside of Millburne that was. Put in by David McIntosh and Judith Wyatt and there we're waiting for more information from the landowners on that application. And two applications that were finalized or one was Mark and Colette Stadleman and they split their farm into two farms and. Patrick and Jane Fern and they had a lot creation and an easement in Southeast Hope Ward. So that's what's going on in the land division. We haven't had county council since our last meeting. We have county council this coming Thursday. So if no one else has a report that we received the mayor's meeting log and the verbal reports by members of council. And. For information, so we could have a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Amanda. Second by Jerry. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we do have a number of bylaws tonight for for reading. So for first and second reading, we have six. We have by law twenty nine twenty one, by law to exempt lot one fifty two from registered plan three thirty four. Southeast Hope Ward, we have by law thirty twenty twenty one to regulate conditions under which fires may be set in open air. We have by law one oh six twenty twenty one provide drainage work known as a Miles Schaefer municipal drain. We have provisional by law one oh seven twenty twenty one to provide for drainage works known as a stock municipal drain. We have by law. Two oh four twenty twenty one, a by law to amend by law thirty nineteen ninety nine, south part lot eighteen concession. Eleven Morningside Ward and a by law twenty twenty, excuse me, two oh five twenty twenty one. To amend by law thirty nineteen ninety nine reference plan forty four R forty four oh four in the Northeast Hope Ward. So we need someone to move and second that to have those bylaws read a first and second time. Moved by Amanda. Second by Andrew. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and we do have some bylaws that are read for a third and final time. We have six of them as well. So we will have by law twenty nine twenty twenty one, a by law to exempt. Lot one fifty two registered plan three thirty four in the Southeast Hope Ward. That was item eight point one point one tonight, by law thirty twenty twenty one, by law to regulate conditions under which fires may be set. In open air by provisional by law one oh two twenty twenty one to provide for drainage works of the Signer Municipal Drain in Morningside Ward. A provisional by law one oh four twenty twenty one for drainage works known as Ross Dock Drain in the Ellis Ward. By law two oh four twenty twenty one, a by law to amend by law thirty nineteen ninety nine. South part of lot eighteen concession eleven. Listable, that was item seven point one point one and by law two oh five twenty twenty one, a by law to amend by law thirty nineteen ninety nine. Reference Plan forty four R forty four oh four in the Northeast Hope Ward. So these bylaws will be read a third and a final time, so we need someone to move that. Moved by Jerry. Second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session, so we will, with your permission, we will do the move that down on our agenda. Do we have any notice of motions? Any new business? Any announcements? Oh, we got, okay, Amanda, we can go first.
Sir, I'm just wanting to let everyone know about an event happening in Alice Ward. So the Ellis Optimists Club, they're planning to host their beef barbecue on Saturday, the June the nineteenth. It's tickets are twenty five dollars with curbside pickup between five and eight P M. They are looking for volunteers for assistance, so. If there is any counselors that want to volunteer or know of any community members that want to. Uh, if there is any counselors that want to volunteer or know of any community members that want to help with this. Um, that would be great. Obviously, this uh last, last year um has been a real challenge for them. Um, and not being able to rent out the hall and space due to COVID, so it'd be great to support them. I can tell you that the beef is being supplied by the Perth County Beef Farmers, so it's going to be excellent. So it'd be really great to uh see some of you guys uh involved.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. Andrew?
No, I just wanted to commend Mayor Aggitts on running these meetings and I know staff helps a lot, but running these meetings from. Running the meetings from our home and uh it, it looks like a lot of work, so if that's an announcement, that's the announcement I'd like to give is uh. Thanks for juggling through this. It's uh surprisingly smooth. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Some nights I don't think it's smooth. There was a couple of hiccups tonight, but anyway. I always say whatever happens, happens and away we go, so. Um, thanks to everyone for all your help and what you do and the staff too, like Ashley sends me a bundle. Public Works delivers it or somebody and it all works, so uh thank you to everyone who helps and makes it, makes it all work. That uh we keep everyone safe and uh, yeah, we, we are able to do this, so. I do appreciate your kind words. Okay, I do have a few announcements there. Um, so congratulations to Jeremy and his wife Jessica. They had a new baby girl. Uh, about a week ago, so um, and happy birthday wishes go out to Daryl. Today's Daryl's birthday and he's in the field working tonight. He had some hiccups at home and he couldn't get away from council tonight to come. And uh, we want to say happy birthday to Hugh. He's going to have a birthday on Thursday. And happy anniversary to Teresa and Earl as they celebrate uh their anniversary on Wednesday. So uh, we do have a lot of things. If anyone else has any uh announcements like that, please let me know or please bring them forward at the meetings. Uh, so we can congratulate uh one another, so. Anyway, that's all I have for now. We do have a closed uh item and we are. Going to uh. At the regular meeting of council of Perth East be temporarily adjourned at seven fifty two. To permit the holding of a meeting and closed session for the purposes of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications. Necessary for that purpose, re property and the meeting is held for the purpose of educating or training the members, re property. So I need a motion to uh move into closed session. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh.
Uh, Ron, I think uh Becky wanted your attention.
Oh, I'm, well, let's vote on this and then we'll go back to Becky, okay? So on favor of this. Okay, Carrie and Becky, sorry.
No, that's okay. I just had an announcement, uh councillor Smith's son getting married this past weekend. And there's no tears, no tears for a shout at that wedding. It's a dry wedding.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, great, so uh, thanks, everyone. Um, I know there is another uh link to go into the closed session. So uh, for those who aren't coming with us to the closed, uh thanks again for being here tonight. Great to see everybody. Um, stay safe and we'll see everyone in a couple of weeks or maybe sooner if I trot back to the office to see you, so. Um, anyway, thanks and good night and if everyone could uh go to their other link, that would be great.